Very good. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, July 11th, 2022. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
As clerk color roll please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Next item is Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item E, which is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's see, because of these, clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Because of the approval of the minutes of the meeting that I was not in attendance, I will abstain.
And Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Move down to item F. This is the reappointment of Megan Griffin for Library Board for a five-year term. Megan has been serving on the board, much appreciated contributor. And is it okay if we do this, Russ?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Having worked with Megan, I can't think of a better candidate to stay on the board and I would enthusiastically move to authorize your reappointment of Megan for a five-year term to Library Board of Trustees from July 2022 to July 2027.
And I would second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes. Thank you, Megan.
That's Megan's daughter here tonight.
Yes. Yes. Great. Well, thank you for being here. Item F2, this is a presentation by Bill Truax and a discussion regarding funding request for workforce housing in the Urban Land Institute Advisory Service Panel Master Plan Proposal. So Bill, welcome.
Thank you.
Pleasure to have you.
And get rid of ninety times soon.
There we go.
Do you need me to say name, address, that kind of stuff?
Yes. If you might just give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, Bill Truax, 999 West Main, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Appreciate you all entertaining us for another session here at council. We're coming. We've got a proposal that we're requesting consideration on from both the city and then later on from Garden City or Urban Renewal to participate in what we like to do the best, which is a public-private partnership privately led. We were developing a fairly significant amount of real estate in Garden City, and we've gotten to the point where we feel that we should help to create a cohesive fabric for what the future development along the river is going to look like. But we don't want to be the only voice out there. So what we'd like to do is expand that and hopefully create a context for something more cohesive and something bigger. And admittedly, we don't like to wait for the public agencies to get around to budgeting. We'd like to lead forward. What we're proposing right now is an advisory services panel for City of Garden City as the ultimate beneficiary and then us within that context as well. But the panel's intent is to create a master plan, hopefully for the bounded area between Osage and the river north to south and then east to west from 40th to 48th Street. There are the grid streets that head into the river and the intent at the end of the day is to create hopefully some very specific linear corridors and transit connections that I think everybody in the neighborhood probably understands are needed and to put some logic and rationale around it and to really take a step back and look at what we already have down there and then look at what is needed and ask folks that are living in the area, working in the area, what that might be. I will clarify from a housekeeping perspective that the panel is going to cost $135,000 under the contract. There are other architectural, engineering, and consulting relationships that are probably another between $50,000 and $100,000. We're asking for the city to participate at $25,000 on the contract with ULI. And then we're asking Urban Renewal to participate at $15,000 and Galena will cover the balance of that request. So and the reason is pretty simple. We like when other folks are at the table as vested owners and and then that way they feel like they can have their say at the table and really have that presence and their voice heard every day. So a couple of the things that we hope to establish as we go through the master plan is we really want to create the brand and the identity of the area. I think all of us have a sort of separate perspective on what that is and what the river means to us and what we want to do is sort of coax all of that out and we'll end up bringing in a branding agency and a marketing agency with us to help define that and put it into really nice pictures and a really defined mission statement, as it were, so that it's, you know, again, we're leading the charge, but the hope is that we really coax out what the neighborhood and the city wants out of the overall master plan. Right now in the valley, infrastructure is super challenged, hard infrastructure with all the folks moving in with the new development of the density, all of that stuff is challenged. So we're trying to create the context for understanding how to make those improvements, both from the irrigation, the road curb gutter sidewalk, the green belt, all of those things. So that'll be elicited in the master plan. And then on the software infrastructure side, we know all of the jurisdictions here in the valley are challenged. We're all competing for talent and the private world ends up taking a lot. We poach a lot from the cities and from other jurisdictions. So we're hoping that we can create a nice gathering spot for all of the planning folks, engineering folks, architectural folks to start thinking about these issues and hopefully the valley wins out by Garden City becoming one of the most focal points in there as it sits between Meridian Eagle, Boise, and it's going to be a crux position. And again, trying to pick out the needs that Garden City has, not just the needs that we have as developers or owners, but that the larger Garden City area has. And one of the biggest issues that we're working on right now is trying to define what buildings there are, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial, whether it's retail, those things we think will become much more apparent and readily packaged. And then one of the things that you've heard from us over time is the affordability. So that doesn't mean just affordability with a capital A, but affordability is just period, like trying to make sense of how to minimize the unnecessary costs in development as we move through so that you don't have a housing unit that could be done for 50,000 bucks cheaper just bearing the sort of transactional costs over time that make it more expensive unnecessarily. So trying to make it more efficient, also just trying to make it targeted specifically at workforce level folks so that you can live and work close to the areas that are super vibrant like Garden City. Simple. There's a lot of smarter folks than me that will be at the table trying to help us do that. Our request is we will execute the contract as the prime beneficiary under that or the prime obligated party under that contract, but we do want the city to be a constituent member in that because we think there's a lot of power in having that partnership in place. And so our request again is 25,000 out of the 135,000 out of the contract will be covered by the city.
I was waiting on you, Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stand for any questions.
Okay, okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Truax. When are you meeting with the Urban Renewal Agency about this?
We've been having ongoing discussions with them. What they are requesting is a formal one-week session beginning August 21st where they would come in, all of the panelists would fly in, we'd host them here and then at the end of the panel session that Friday, they would ask to present here to the city directly preferably here if they can do it. They could do it from the hotel, but it'd be better if it was here. But it's a week-long panel session.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. True Axe, again, thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate your presentation and the information included in the packet. And I appreciate your investment in Garden City. As you may be aware, I work at Fisher's Technology, so I'm right in the thick of the development. And so I'm very familiar with what is currently happening. I have a few questions. First is, what happens if the city doesn't participate or does not financially contribute to this?
The planning session is still going to go on. We have enough of vested interest in doing the overall committed master plan. So we would move forward with it. We just, I think it would strengthen the relationship and make it a plan that's adoptable by the city. I think you could still get by that way, but we feel like it sort of binds the city that way. We would still move forward. We would move forward if the Urban Renewal Agency didn't participate either. But again, our, the amount of investment that we have in real estate development that we're doing down in that grid street area, we feel like it's necessary to start establishing the cohesive pattern and use and sort of coax out what the long vision is on.
So you're, I'm in alignment and I've often thought it would be nice to have a master plan and some cohesion. Do you have examples? Because I know of one example where there's been an analysis done and it seems like a lot of analysis goes in, but then you don't see the output. Do you have examples of where you could specifically point and say, hey, this analysis was completed and this was the outcome?
No, not really. I mean, planning sessions are funny that way in my mind because so many times it's a lot of paper produced and it doesn't become anything until someone on the private side goes and starts to try to do something or you have a city that will go buy something and start to develop the plan on its own. In this case, we're leading that and our specific intent is to start to build out some of the stuff that's being developed in this plan. So I think in this specific case, you will have definite actionable items that come out of it. Our specific requests from the folks that are here are related to issues that we deal with every day on the development side. So infrastructure, how do you deal with getting traffic and circulation up and down those blocks and over cross block and how do you enhance the pedestrian flows and things like that? So I think this specific case will have actionable items when they come out of it.
Do you, having, and this may be premature strategy, because based on the information provided, it appears that there would be literally hundreds of businesses, residents. How in your mind do you have a strategy? How would you bring that together? How, what kind of management and strategy would that involve?
Yeah, a couple. We'll see. We'll see how, what the turnout looks like, but right now the panel's going to come in and they're expecting the interview between 70 and 100 stakeholders in and around the area to try to develop a needs analysis of folks. So I'm sure they'll reach out to Fishers and all the other employers in the area to try to build back what they see, what's already in place, how to deal with some of the challenges, because I'm sure everybody's going to have the negative side of things to deal with that they'll add into the plan. And so how to synthesize that into an actionable set. And they do it across the country very, very regularly. So I think they've got the framework for handling that kind of stuff. And then we're giving them access to all of the design teams that we've worked with over the last eight or nine years here in Garden City, trying to deal with the development challenges and the zoning code issues as we've developed properties that we own here. So I think they'll be able to build back from the historical set of information that we've developed, but also they've already reached out to the planning department to ask them for other materials, access to materials that have gone through public approvals processes and things like that. So it'll be way beyond the scope of stuff that we normally do.
One last question. Have, and again, this may be ahead, you know, you may not be able to respond, but have you considered even at this juncture punching through a minor arterial so that potentially from 38th to 42nd rather than all of the traffic, because the traffic on Adams, as this council has heard me discuss many, many times, has become very problematic. And with all of this development, which is wonderful, it's going to create even more challenges. And so I know that people have speculated, well, gee, wouldn't it make it easier for the folks just trying to get to the school, just trying to get to the Boys and Girls Club to have a minor ability to get from 38th, say, to 42nd?
We haven't specifically at the 38th side because of the Veterans Memorial major crossing. So if you did it on the other side, headed towards Chindon from Adams, I think that's possible, but I think on the other side of Adams headed toward the river, it's really hard to cross VMP. We have thought about many different acquisition strategies to try to punch through there, including just pedestrian flows, because if you look at those really long blocks, they're a difficult challenge, even if you are just walking or riding a bike, because you've got to walk, go all the way down to the Adams Street and then head back down. So those are all things, though, that these folks are looking at already and have been thinking about, and we've specifically asked them to try to deal with. What we're hoping for is that when you come through with a master plan framework like this, you're probably going to elicit some conversations with folks that own property currently and would be interested in some kind of a development strategy that's not just a, let me put it on the market and see what we can do with it. Because I think at the end of the day, you've got to come up with a framework where you're not maximizing the density of every single individual little parcel that's owned in those cross block areas, because otherwise you just can't. I mean, if you try to put a 20-unit development on every single 100 by 300-foot lot, you just won't get any cross blocks. So if you can approach it a little bit more, where you step back and look at the ideal connection points and invite people to the table. I think Idaho is a place where they don't like to be told exactly what to do, but they would invite themselves into a conversation. Certainly, I think that's the kind of conversation that we would have, and I think it will happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, yes. Great plan, great presentation. I can clearly understand why you want the city to have some skin in the game.
Sure.
So beyond the $25,000 that you're asking us to invest, this is clearly just phase one, right? You're bringing everybody together. We're talking about it. Do you foresee another ask after this is done? Say, well, you know, thanks to that, now we need another X to move to the next phase or is this kind of?
No, not really. For us, it's really the skin in the game issue is the only ask. I think with that, we're good. The city has a seat at the table and can help direct resources to help us see it from the city's perspective, because we're looking at it from the developer side of the deal or the owner's side of the deal. We are, we will begin to move forward. Our hope really from a larger perspective is to take a step back and hope that the planning approach that's taken here is taken for some of the other key larger scale assets that exist in Garden City along the river. So that it's more of a holistic approach to it rather than a single parcel or a single owner approach. That's our bigger ask, I think, is that it becomes an elevated game.
I like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Jenna, do you have any comments you'd like to share? Hang, stick with us, Bill. Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't know that I have any particular comments. I have been engaged with this group over the last couple of months as they work through the master plan process. And also, as Mr. Truax has noted, that we've met a couple of times with ULI as well. And certainly, staff is happy to provide any documentation, any outreach and welcomes, should this move forward as a joint effort, the ability to work on this plan.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a timeframe we need to be looking at for decisions? Bill?
No, I think whatever your typical and customary public process is to get through it.
Well, given the briefing tonight, council, would you be comfortable taking a look at this as an action item in two weeks? Or do you have another mechanism you'd like to employ? Okay. We'll put it on the agenda for two weeks and we can continue. I'll continue, I guess, a little bit to get a little more involved with the staff and if there are any other questions or anything.
Excellent.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. And the next item on our agenda is G1. This is a continuation from our 6/27/2022 meeting on SUBFY 2021-0010. As a matter of information, council, we had a late submittal today regarding this application. Council can make a decision, needs to make a decision on whether to admit that into the record. That's one decision. The second decision is if you had sufficient time to review it before the meeting tonight to retain the application as an action item or whether you need to take some time to absorb the information that was submitted for a hearing at our next meeting. So those are the two precursor items that we need to discuss before I bring the applicant up.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do not feel like I had enough time to digest. I did note the email that came in late today, but I have not had enough time to process and do a thorough assessment.
Okay.
Evaluation on my own part.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I concur with Councilmember Jorgensen that I saw the email, but it wasn't worth it. So first time I saw this one was here on my desk when I walked in here for the meeting. So I have not had a chance to review it as well. So I would like to push it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one other comment, just for, since I've been gone and I'm relying pretty solely on written information in the past, in the information that was provided in both summaries. The summary, item 28, indicates, and I know that this is very, very minor, but I want to make sure I understand and get clarity that well, first of all, on JK L, on item L, Council President Heller moved to continue, or was that Councilmember Page continued and Councilmember Heller seconded?
Oh, we've got, okay, Councilmember Heller's made the motion and seconded it both. No.
Okay.
Pay this page. No.
And then for other clarity, just again, I apologize. And this may be within the information that's provided today. Was there a doc, or maybe it's from Jenna's summary, was there a document from Republic Services?
There was an email.
An email. Okay.
And it's in the original package.
Okay, so I just need to go back and look that up.
It's in the original package.
And then I know we're still kind of discussing, since I haven't had the opportunity to dig into the supplemental information. I did question just based on Jenna's information that was provided. And quite candidly, the emails that we've received concerning emergency service vehicles and my own constituents and coworkers, their concern about emergency vehicles. And I know that the agency's approved, but I'm wondering if we need to return it back to the agencies and say, hey, we have a very valued partner that's expressing concern. Did you rubber stamp this or did you actually do an analysis? Is that a viable action or no?
Well, I think the I think if we wanted them to take a look at the supplemental, we could do that, but I'm not comfortable asking them to reexamine what they already said.
Okay.
Yeah, so the well, given the discussion from the council, I think and for the sake of the applicants, we have a Wednesday before a Monday meeting cutoff for this because, you know, people have to have an opportunity to digest this before you do your presentation so they can they can have a basis for, you know, questioning and all those sorts of things, but
There's a reason.
There's a reason for what? Well, why? Well, you know, the issue is that isn't something the council is able to control, frankly, and asking them to make a decision and review this on the Ds is something we just aren't able to do. It doesn't look like so. Council, I would request a action to continue this once again until our July 25 meeting and we'll be prepared to have you back up here and we'll get a decision made. Well, you can at the next meeting. I just don't have this, have it set up for now. So well, you know what? They've got a stack of stuff like this. So the staff does the best they can do and we, I'm on the receiving end of that in another jurisdiction and that's just what we have to do. So council, I'd entertain an action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we continue this project to, let's see, we get a case number, SUBY or SUBFY 2021-0010 to a date certain of July 25th to provide council members adequate time to review late submissions and any other new information that may be forthcoming from the applicant.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And condition that it be routed to agencies for review.
Okay.
The Any modified drawings at night?
Yeah, any late, the late submittal information back through the agencies, Jenna. Can we do that in the two weeks? We don't know if we'll hear back from them, but we can get it out.
Is it better to postpone a month?
Well, I think we do the two weeks and then if it's not going to work out, we'll have to
Continue.
We'll have to, we'll have to do it. Because we got to get in line. I think the critical ones. I think the critical ones.
Emergency.
Emergency services, so. So hopefully we can get that done. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Are none all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you on the 25th. Thank you, sir. Next item, council item G2. Authorized fiscal year 2022 payroll allocation adjustments. Within our currently approved payroll budget, we have some room in that budget on the basis of some unfilled positions in our police department primarily that we haven't been able to fill. And because of the circumstances we're dealing with as a nation with the inflation, we have the ability to use those funds to reallocate to our staff and boost sworn police officers by 7% and non sworn personnel by 6% between now and September 30th. The budget for 2023 is forthcoming. I think most of you know my, the budget that I present will have those numbers in it as well. We can, we can make that work. So just want to accelerate that by the three months to help deal with this inflation that everybody's dealing with now. And that's, that's my ask. So what you would be doing essentially would be authorizing personnel budget, personnel budget to be reallocated to other sections of the department in addition to to the police department. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move we go in favor of that authorization of budget transfer.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Are you none all in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sure, the staff will all thank you. That will become effective for the current pay period that ends today.
End of July 8th, yeah. This this Friday.
Yeah, we paid this Friday, so. There's no need, we have no unfinished business, no new business, no need for an executive session. So the next item is adjourned.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adjourn this session.
Second, motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Stand adjourned.